Hello 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 beautiful people, welcome back to the live stream. So today we will be continuing our journey of learning Japanese and we were on learning Hiragana. So we'll be continuing with that. Actually, we have completed almost every column of Hiragana except two of them. So if you have joined us in the previous stream, so we had completed all of them, but we are left with two. So we'll be completing that and before that we'll wait for some moment for everybody to join. And let me check if the stream is working fine. I think it's working fine. Yes, so how are you guys doing? And apologies apologies apologies, I wasn't able to stream yesterday. Actually, I went somewhere in the morning and I came late in the evening. I was so tired. I'm so tired, I didn't, I wanted to stream, but my body didn't allow me to stream because I had my office in the morning. So I'm so sorry for that, but here we are and also one more thing. Um, I also told you guys that I will be streaming from ten to eleven. But I'll just want to make a note that this can, uh, this stream was scheduled from ten to eleven, but I think, uh, it's, I don't know how it got delayed twenty thirty minutes. I scheduled that stream for thirty, not on ten P M, but it got delayed. I know, I don't know what is happening, but uh, we'll figure it out. It's my first time streaming, so yeah. I think we should start. I think we should start. Let's get straight into the Japanese learning series. So we were competing Hiragana and if you have previously joined our streams, we were using these blogs and for learning Hiragana and we were following this pathway, this schedule to learn Japanese and right now we are tackling N five for a year, we have a year plan. But this is very, very long. I think we'll take, we'll certainly take less time to complete N five level. Because I believe like, uh, because I kept Hiragana and Katakana and basic pronunciation for three months time period. But I think it will only take two months and I, if we'll add one month of training and one month of practicing, just pure practicing, then also it's too much. I believe we should be able to complete this in two months and we should be able to complete this also because we are tackling N five vocabulary in two months as well. So I believe this is, uh, I think the maximum we can get, we will, we will, we are planning the maximum we can get. Like maybe we can take a year to complete N five, but uh, we will be targeting for an eight month plan as well. Because I'll be updating this plan and some of my friends also told me that completing N five in one year is too much. It's like taking a lot of time because we have other levels to complete as well. And for anti-level job, you need to complete it N three level. So, so I'll be updating this plan. Uh, so this is not the final plan, but yeah, we'll be sticking to the structure for now. That, that means we will complete Hiragana and then we'll complete Katakana and then the basic pronunciation part and the phrases. Yeah, you guys with me? Okay, so let me open the blogs we were using to learn these alphabets. So today we'll be practicing after completing the, because we were left with these two columns, right? The ya ones and the wa ones and the last end, which is the, I would say the only word for this N letter. So we'll be completing these two columns right, uh, today and with that we'll be completing in the Hiragana. But what I believe and what I've seen from the, uh, I mean, what I've seen from the Buddhist books or blogs, that Hiragana is not just limited to this, but there are also some other sounding words inside Hiragana that are non-mentioned inside this, at least this, in this image. So there are other also. So we'll be, we'll tackling them also because those were mentioned in this block. So, oh, that is something different. I don't want to show. This was the one I wanted to display. Let me. Okay, I mean, uh, so we were targeting this to complete in the first phase. But these are also, these are ones which were inside Hiragana, I believe. I'm not sure these are inside Hiragana or they are extra sounding words, but we will be tackling this also. So this is all inside Hiragana. This is full Hiragana chart, this one. And then this one is the Katakana chart, this is the Hiragana chart, we'll be tackling. So yeah, let's complete these two columns and then we are through with the first, I think, first part of Hiragana, maybe. So let me just see if the stream is working fine. Oh, hi. Hi Akshit, how are you? Welcome to the stream. How are, how are you doing? You're doing good? Actually, Akshit, I wanted to ask you one thing. Uh, just tell me, like this one, which I'm showing right now, this table is the one we do, we knew from the previous team that this was the one we have to tackle inside Hiragana. But what are these ones like the G one and the Z one, D one, are these extras for this? Or are these inside this only? But I mentioned in different tables. I'm not sure, so sure about this. I have to read about this. But we have to, I think we have to cover all of them, I think, because this is the Hiragana chart and this is inside this, okay? I believe we have to cover this, but what do you, what do you say? I think you have covered Hiragana, no? So let me ask you first. Uh, we were on the last phase of the first table. Let me open that, uh, yeah, the ya one, right? We have completed the mo one at the end. Yes, and we were there for this one. Yes. Yeah, completed the ra one, ri one, the last one. Okay, let me, we'll see. It's pronounced, it's pronounced words which are really used. Oh, so we have to tackle these now for Hiragana, to complete Hiragana for now? Because if they are mentioned here, I think we should complete them as well. Because we are tackling everything from the basic level, so we should consider going through these as well. What do you say? Hmm, these are not mentioned here, but I think we can find mnemonics for them also. Because this is not the complete chart, I believe. Is Tofu's blog mentioning those things? Let me see that. Oh yeah, these are the ones which I was talking about. Dakuten is a symbol that looks like this, looks like a double quotation mark, right? The dakuten symbol marks the Hiragana from certain consonant columns and change their pronunciation. It turns the consonant into a voiced and vibrating sound. Which just means your vocal cause vibrate when the sound is made. Okay. So it's a sounding word where you vibrate when you are speaking, vibrate your tongue or vibrate the mouth. Okay, let's take a closer look at the each of them. So we'll, yeah, we'll see them also. I think we should complete them as well in the series because we are tackling inside, we are tackling all of the Hiragana part, so I think this comes under the Hiragana. Okay, I think let's start with this. And we'll be practicing the entire thing, entire Hiragana today as well, whatever, whatever we have covered in Hiragana. Uh, main word Hiragana and Katakana characters with these, uh, dakutuns and handa, handa kutsuns. And how do you pronounce that? I mean dakutuns or dakutuns? I think dakutuns should be the current pronunciation for this and handa kutsuns, which give the alphabet a different sound like, like ga will be sounded as ga with the use ok dakuten. Oh, so these are sounding words which are, uh, ga with the use of ok dakuten. I think we should, we should read about this as well, I believe. So we'll go through, go through with them also. This is not completed, I think. Let's complete the two columns, then we can read about them and find out what is in depth, what is about that. I mean Akshit has mentioned that these are the sounding words which are used with certain phrases and these, uh, which give alphabet a sounding with ga. Okay, we'll go through with them, we'll go through them. Uh, okay, let's just first tackle the entire first table which has mentioned over here. So we were left with ya and the W part. Okay, so let's just complete that first, then we can move on with the other ones. Okay, let me just pull it out inside the workspace. We work through with this, yeah, because these are mentioned with the K only, I think these are sounding words, I believe. We'll study about them in detail, I think. We should, we should go through them. The words which you were showing, these were the dakutuns and handa kutsun, huh? I think this is what they mentioned in Tofu's blog also, uh, whatever's reading right now. Yeah, these are dakuten, handa kuten, what you were saying, yeah. So yeah, we will be covering that as well inside Hiragana. Okay, let me, I think we should first complete this. Okay, uh, where is ya? Yeah, yeah, it's here only. Okay. The column is a little strange. These are the only three items in here and ye and yi, ye and yi are seemingly missing. Yeah, because there is only ya, you and you, ye and yi are missing, ye and yi is missing. Actually, they, they used to exist, but now they don't. Instead, people use this and this one. This is, I think, E, this is E. This is E and this is, what is this? A E? This is E A. I think this was, uh, in the first ones already. I believe, let me see. Yeah, this was this, right? This was U. So yeah, the E and the U are not present. So E and the, so E and U are used same, but they are indicating that E and the U, no, A, sorry, A. E and the A which are not, which are missing inside the ya ones. So these are used. Uh, and yeah, so these are used because it sounds pretty similar. So instead people use E and A. Okay, because of that, you can, you only have to learn these kind of other section, okay? So people are using this E and A which we, uh, did in the first, uh, in the first line, in the first line of Hiragana, we did these two and so people are using them instead of using ye and ye inside the, uh, inside this room. Inside by some, by sounding words, yeah. So, so first let me, okay, so what is the consonant use for this? Uh, they are using a ship and a hook, ship and a hook. This is, um, if you can share your number or ID, I will show you a PDF of N five, which will clear all the doubts and that will provide, that to use phrases as well. Yeah, you can provide me on the Instagram ID. Uh, I think I have mentioned my Instagram ID inside, inside the description, I have mentioned. I mean, not in the description, but let me share my Instagram ID, I think can, uh, share me over there. So this is my Instagram ID, can share me, uh, on, on the Instagram. I think we can share PDF on Instagram, I believe. Okay, so yeah, uh, so yeah, yes, we're doing ya only. So ya, it sounds like yaach, ya, yaach and yak. So it's ya.
Ya.
Yeah, okay. So to remember this, you can use this consonant, uh, so in this mnemonic, uh, which is a ship and a hook, but this is not good. Uh, it can do better. Ya, ya is in yak. I mean, this is also not a good one. I believe both of them are not good. Okay, wait, uh, okay, wait, let me share you the PDF. Thank you. Thank you so much, Akshit. Uh, okay, let me. Okay, I didn't bring up the workspace, Akshit. I was at. Nani? I think it's down beneath them. I think below this, yeah. So let me pick this up to practice. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, okay. Let me paste this and let me make it bigger so we can practice it better. Let me lock this down and we can practice over here, right? Okay, so let me, uh, so there was not a good mnemonic to remember this. It's just a P inside and the dash over it. So they are saying that you can use a yaach, but it is not a yaach. So we can't remember this alphabet using this mnemonic for now. I think we can go for another better one. For now, we can remember this using this only. There's a ship and a hook, just like that, I believe. It's not a good mnemonic person for this, at least. So a yaach would be a fine mnemonic to remember this alphabet. Yaach and how is it, uh, how is it, uh, what do you say? How is it, uh, written? So this is like, first strike is like this, second strike is above this and third strike is like this. Yeah. Okay, so how is a mnemonic present inside this? So what they are indicating is that consider this as a ship and there is a ship inside this and there is a hook inside this. So it's not an easy way to remember, but I think we should practice it enough to, for this alphabet right now. Okay, uh, again, we can practice the same thing like this, like, okay. First we have to do, this is the first strike, this is the second strike and this is the third strike. This is a first strike, second strike, it's like this and third strike is like this. First strike, second strike and third strike. First, first strike, second strike and third strike. First strike, second strike and third strike. First strike, second strike and third strike. First strike, second strike and third strike, like this. So here we are, we have covered the first row of this and what is the mnemonic for this? The mnemonic for this is yaach and how is it built? Just, uh, just to remember a ship and this is a ship and there's a hook beneath that. So it's a, so it's like a, a P, uh, uh, a stroke like this and a stroke like this. Okay, yeah, so we can remember this even in this. Okay, so we are done with the first one. Unable to share this on Insta, what's your Discord? Oh, I haven't, I haven't used Discord for a while. Uh, I'm not sure about, what's the ID for that? Let me, let me check. What's the ID for my Discord? I haven't used Discord. Uh, this not mentioned over here. Uh, Akshit, have you sent me a friend request on Instagram? I mean, I can send you the Discord after the stream on Insta only. Okay. I'll send you the, uh, send you the Discord ID on the Instagram DM, okay? If that works. Okay, let's continue with this one. Uh, this is second one is, uh, okay, if you are on this, see how this car looks like yaach, yeah. So when I'm in the ya, now the next one is u. U is, it's not u, it's u. U or u?
Yu.
U only. It's u and what is the mnemonic for this? It's a fish, it's just a fish. Okay, it's a good, it's a good mnemonic. We can remember this by using a fish. Okay, and what they are indicating, they are indicating U turn. That's not a good mnemonic. We remember using a fish. And which fish are you recommending? Uh, the car is very unique looking fish. It looks like big eyeball swimming in water. What is it looking at? You, a big koofal. Hmm, okay. So okay, we'll be, uh, we'll remember this word using a fish. But I think fish could not be a better suited mnemonic to remember this because when we say u, u, we should be coming up with a mnemonic which is similar sounding only. So I believe u as in U turn is a good mnemonic, but it's difficult to remember this way also. Actually, we should go with the fish only. Okay, we should go with the fish. But fish is not the right choice, I believe. Let's try U turn first. Uh, U turn is, uh, they are making a U turn and, I believe there is a strike and there is a U turn looping inside that. It's a car. Okay, we can try this first. Uh, okay, let's try the U turn. It's like u, U turn. To remember this and the word would be a standing and then there is a U turn like this. Like this, something like this. Okay. Chalo bhai, take care tomorrow, I have to go to college. Oh, nice. Okay. Mata aashik, see you tomorrow. See you tomorrow, Akshit. Bye bye. Uh, so this was like, uh, stroke like this and a U turn like this, the big U turn. Big U turn like this. Okay. A stroke like this and a big U turn like this, big U turn. Okay. So I think, uh, I mean, how can I not have mnemonic? So there is a strike over like this, there is a U turn like this and there is a looping U turn like this. And the way you remember this is the, the single U turn and the stroke, two strikes and one U turn can be one. But let's see if we can remember this using a U turn. I believe fish was the night choice, but when you hear the word u, you will not be the, the first one, uh, the first thing which will not come in your mind would be, I think you will not be remembering, uh, uh, fish using the word u. So I think that's not the right choice to remember. I think this is the right choice to use, to use this mnemonic, okay? Okay, right, okay, like this. Like this. Like this. And second strike, third strike. Is it good? Okay, it's good. But the thing is, it's joining like this. I'm not joining. It's joining like this and like this. It's, it's joining like this and like this. Then another third. So what I did here, I was using three strikes in this one, so they are not three strikes present. There is only two strikes present. The first strike is the bigger one, which we have like this, a P and a slant over it. A P, like, just like we draw a P and a big curve over it. A, a P and a big curve over it, a P and a big curve over it. Okay. So this is how we remember this. I think this mnemonic is not good to remember the alphabet, but we have to practice it. So yeah, that's the one. Hi Sartak, welcome to the stream. Is all stroke called some, it's all stroke called sometimes? Actually, I think I listen some YouTube channels. I didn't get your point. So how are you doing, Sartak? How was the day? It was good? Okay, so we, let's move on to the last one. Okay. So we have covered ya, u and like, like, uh, third one is u. Okay, let's do the last one. Yo, let's hear the sound as well.
Yo.
It's yo only. Yo and the mnemonic for this is a musical note. I can see a musical note over this. But with yo, we will not be putting musical note to this alphabet or the sound. I mean, uh, yo yo, yo yo could be our one. Yo yo could be our one, uh, good mnemonic to remember because yo yo gives us a musical tone and yo is, can be connected to yo and it's a musical note only. So we can use this, yeah. And a yo yo also. So a guy is holding a yo yo in his hand. This is also good mnemonic to remember. I believe we can, we can take both of them. I think this is a better one. Using a yo yo is a better one. I think we can take a yo yo, like a person, a guy is holding a yo yo on his hand. Well, this is a guy. I think my twang is not really good. So he is holding a yo yo in his hand. Scraped around his finger. So it's yo. Yo yo, okay. So how to write this? So the first strike goes like this. This is the first strike and this is second strike. That's weird. I think this should be the first strike, this should be the second strike. I think they are indicating is the first strike is a second strike. Let's go by the, uh, by what they are telling. This is the first strike, this is the second strike. This is the first strike is the second strike. Okay. I want to say is all the stroke called something like first stroke say this and second stroke say this means specific means. Uh, no, there is no specific stroke or something, I believe. I just call it a first or a second stroke just to remember it in a way. Because how you write Japanese is a bit different for everyone, but the way you remember Japanese in the starting only is the way you write, you will write in the future. So remember, so you should remember the alphabet, the way they are written originally. So like this alphabet, let's say, for example, this alphabet. So this is the alphabet, you can write it in the true ways. First you can make this and then you can make this. But the better way is that you should make this first and make this second. So we should, as I know, as we are beginners of Japanese, we should consider, so I'm just, uh, using the original approach of how they are meant to write. So that's why I'm just calling this the first stroke and this is the second stroke. There is no specific meaning to these strokes for now. I don't know about that. Maybe there should be, there could be a meaning, but for now I just call them because it's easier for me to remember that this is the first stroke that we have to put and this is the second stroke we have to put in a loop. That's, that's only, that is only it. Nothing more than that. This is a flag, I'm sad, say it's like first stroke and then the second stroke, just to remember. Just to remember that I don't have to put this one first or this one second. I have to put, uh, this one first and this one second. That's only it and I don't have any specific reason in my mind to say that. I can just say write this first and write second this. So there's not a big reason why I say first or second stroke. It's just like I have to remember the way that originally. So we should follow that way. So there is a first stroke, second stroke, first stroke, second stroke, first stroke and second stroke. Did you call the points, Sartak? There is not a specific meaning to how I write the strokes. It's just the way I remember myself to write the Japanese alphabets in the right fashion. That's it. So with that, we have completed these three Y columns, uh, Y row, Y row. And let me mark the mnemonic as well. So this was the hand and this is a yo yo that is carrying inside on the hand. That is how we can remember. That is how we can remember that, okay, let's move on to the two or three, three are remaining, I think, yeah. These are the ones that are remaining, so we are completing these. These are the last ones which are remaining off this table, because we have to cover uh other tables as well, which are mentioned beneath them. So we'll be committing uh those tables as well was. As I told you, this is not the table in Hinagana only, these are the other sounding words presented in Hinagana. Because we are covering everything from the basic on the starting, so we should consider covering everything which is presented in Hinagana. Not just the basic ones which are used every time, but also the other ones as well. I believe we should, we should uh learn them, but I think. Yeah, we should learn them, uh because we are following for the starting, we should learn them as well. These are the ones which are mostly used, but we should consider learning them as well. But these are the ones which are really difficult to write them down. I think I should read about them. I'll read about them on the on off stream, like if we should uh if we if we should consider them. Inside Hinagana or not, but let's uh like what Akshit said. That we should consider them because these are the ones which are used side by side, but I am not sure about these. So let's complete this one, these three left and this column as well. Uh I think we will not be able to complete this column today, but we can try to complete that. But we'll be completing these three and we'll be revising the Hinagana chart, the first table at least today, okay? Let's just complete the first table and let's just revise everything once again, we will be writing them down, we'll be revising the mnemonics also. And uh we'll do this continuously for a week or two, so that we can uh we will be able to remember this everything of the of scratch. Okay, let's just complete the other remains ones as well, I'll pull up the worksheet for you guys, give me a second. Okay. So okay, these are the ones which are left, let me pull them on the worksheet. Okay. Let's lock them down and let's start practicing the last ones, okay. Let's first go to them, further ones. Yeah, these are the ones, let's just first hear how they're pronounced.
Wa.
Wa.
Oh.
It's.
Oh.
It's not wo, it's ooh.
Oh.
It's more like ooh, but there's a W also. So like when you say, when you yell boh, boh, boh yells kai. So we should, we say boh, but it's.
Oh.
The W is a little bit silent in this pronunciation, I believe.
Oh.
That is what I can hear, but I think we should pronounce wo only, it's like wo, wo but W is little bit silent. So. Bo and uh W little bit silent, boh, boh, like that. Okay, and the last one is N, how is it pronounced?
Hmm.
It's an N sound, not N, it's N sound, just like no in Hindi. And uh and in English is N only, when you combine that with like uh words like. And and nose, so you say the nose sound from your nose, but not from your tongue. So that's what I believe, that is it, and let's start learning them, how they're written. The wa is wasabi and wasabi is I think, okay. Wasabi is a dish and vas is this, which is displayed in the uh mnemonic. So we can remember this as by using vas, wa, vas and. I think this is a, this is a good one to learn this mnemonic and this is vasponic, so they are both recommending vas. We'll stick to the vasponic, let's just write vas, this is the mnemonic we are using to remember this alphabet. Vas and how is it drawn? It's like a B. With, I think wings, yeah, it's like wings and we have some. It looks like a vase, okay, let's not go into the drawing part. Okay, the first strike is like this and second strike is like a Z. Wait a second, I have done this before. When I have done this? I think we have done this before, right? The way we write this, I think I have done this before, but where? Let me see. I think we have done this before, somewhere though. Oh, here only, see, we have done this before, but the only difference is it's a sharp edge over here and it's a. Cove edge over here, wow, that's only difference. The one sharpened cove which makes a full difference of this word's sound, the alphabet's sound. It's wa here and it's re here, re and wa. Both are so similar and the mnemonic we use to remember this is a B and I think we can mark a B. These are the legs, these are the body and these are the wings, it's a B, it looks like a B for now. Okay, let's just move forward and let's practice this alphabet. The first strike is like down and R Z covering that, first strike is down and Z covering that. This is not good and R Z covering that, first strike down and R Z covering that. First strike down and second strike is like this, first strike down, second strike is like this. First strike down, second strike is like this and first strike down, second strike is like this. But that is how we write that. That was easy, but I think let's just take a memory, how can, how well we can remember that? So we'll take that later and we'll practice all of them together. So let's just move on to the second one, this is po, kept a ma, it's wo. So wo as in when we pronounce wo uh in English and um yeah, that is it. And how we learn this mnemonic is that a frog with its tongue out. Hmm. The mnemonic, what is the Reddit post suggesting? Wo can be remembered using, wo, the person is running, huh, that is a good one. It looks like a person from a standing point, it's like a body, a leg and a hand. And it's just jumping over an obstacle, we'll only uh when we just yell wo. We are jumping over obstacle, we can remember that also, so yeah, we can consider this. For. Then we are saying wo and the person, okay. The person is jumping over an obstacle. Okay, you can say that, oh, I'm jumping over an obstacle, so yeah, that is a good way to remember. And the thing goes like this, first leg, second strike is a body and a leg, third strike is the obstacle itself. First strike, second strike and the third strike, first strike, second strike and the third strike. First strike, second strike, the leg, right. And the third strike, first strike, second strike and the third strike. First strike, second strike and the third strike, first strike, second strike and the third strike. Uh are you guys practicing with me? Can pick pen and paper and practice it with me, I mean, just looking at the, looking at how they are written down would not help you. So you should practice it by yourself, so practice it side by side like me, I cannot use pen and paper, so I'm using the mouse and keyboard. That's why, that's the only reason I'm using uh a mouse and. I wish I had a tablet, I mean, if I had a tablet, I can write them down a little fast and it will be more efficient to remember that that way. But if we not generally use a mouse to write them down, we will be using a pen and paper, a pen or something like that. So yeah, that's a, that's a thing I would, I can buy, but not so sure about that. So yeah, we are done with this and let me mark the mnemonic, so this is a man. Who is jumping over an obstacle, kept like this, so that is a good way to remember this one at least. Okay, let's move on to the last one, which is N, no, it's not N but it's N, N sound. Okay, and the N sound, uh how do you remember this alphabet? We will be using N only, it's it looks like N, straight away N, yeah. It's look like N only, it's it looks like a more like an edge, but we can correspond it to N only, so N can be. Used to remember this and we can write N and it's like N only, but a bigger N, I can say. Okay. Uh we can write like this, okay. And only, this is N over here, okay? Let's move on to the, let's move on and practice in that, uh like this. Like this. Like this. Like this. Like this. And like this, only one strike and we have covered it by alphabet. So I think we have covered the first table of Hinagana, yeah, okay. They covered everything in Hinagana, in not even everything, but they covered everything which is mentioned in the first table. So yeah, that's good, that's good. Okay, and you guys doing good? Are we good till here? Um I think that, I think we have to practice it again, all of them because I can't remember really some of them right now. I need to practice it all over again, so we'll be doing that right now. And before that, we can just skim through everything once again and see if we have missed or see. Can recall something, something, some things from that, uh like uh R E. Let's just pronounce every alphabet once again and then just clear our pronunciation first, okay? R E U A O, okay? Ka Ki Ku Ke Ko, these are the basic ones. Sa, no, comes the exception part, Shi, sa, shi, su, se, so. Ta, then the concept two exceptions, chi and su. Da, chi, tu, te, to, na, ni, nu, ne, no, ha, he, fu, he, ho. The fifth expert, ah sorry, fourth exception. Ma, mi, mu, me, mo, ya, you, yo, he and ye are missing because. They are pronounced the same way as we have uh as the blog mentioned, they are pronounced the same way and written the same way. As E and A in the first column, right? So once the guys who have come late, uh let me show you once again. Uh where was that? Yeah, so, so the reason that uh he and ye are not covering this. Column is because most people pronounce it the same way as E and A. And most people write the same way as well, that's how. And we are ra, ri, ru, re, ro, wa, woo and hmm, hmm sounds, okay. That is it, we had, I mean, one, two, three, uh four, four exceptions in the entire uh table. And we have covered this till now, a good progress. Okay, let's just, I think we should practice it once again, everything once again. Before that, I would like to take a five minutes break, I mean. Okay, I think we should take a five minutes break and then after that, we will be revising everything which we have covered till now. The entire Hinagana which we have turned, covered till now, we will be revising it once again, the mnemonics, their pronouns and how they are written as well. So we'll be revising everything once again and after that we will be ending the stream and tomorrow's goal would be. To uh do the ones which are left, I will come prepared, some uh I will come, I'll come and research over these things. Uh but then we have to include these in our Hinagana, because these I know, we have to do these ones, but I'm not sure about these ones. So I'll just search about this and we'll do this one tomorrow and practice it once again. So we'll be dedicating ten to fifteen minutes practicing everything which we have done previously, everything. Because practice is the only thing which we need here. Can you say again the last word sound? It's like, it's not like N, it's N only, no, the N sound, the only sound, it's not like we are saying anything. We're just pronouncing N, but you are not saying it, hmm, hmm, that's it, hmm. I mean, I can uh, I mean, I think it's not clear over the stream, I'll just play this once. So you will get the point.
Hmm. Hmm. Hmm.
You got the point, it's like hmm.
Hmm.
That's it, so we are not pronouncing it completely, it's just the sound, not we are saying anything, that's it. Uh I think we shall take a quick three to four minutes break and we will write back and we'll practice it everything once again. Okay, see you guys in a bit and we will write back and continue with the stream, okay, see ya. We are back on the stream. I think if our break was too long, we shouldn't be taking that many breaks in the stream. It just, I think it's just break the chain of thought sometimes. So yeah, I think we are back, we are good to practice everything once again, which we have learned it now. Let's do, let's start it. I think we are good to go. You guys with me? Oh, okay. Right, let me write down everything which we have done till now. Or maybe, what we can do is, we can erase everything which is written over here and practice over it. No, let me, let me just write everything now. I mean, uh it's a good way to remember everything once again, yeah? Our stream is working fine. Yes, it is. Okay, let us write everything down once again. So, starting with. R, E, U, A, O, let me write down in this fashion. R, E, U, A, O, oh, R, E, U, A and O. Then we had, what we had? We had. Ka and Sa. So we had, let me give a gap because in here we can write them down. So, wait, let me get the space. Ka. Ki. Ko. Ke and then Ko. Give us space, write them down, then we shall move to Sa. Shi, the first exception which we had in our mind. Sa, Shi, Su, Se and then So. Then I'm pick line once again, then it's like Ta. Shi, the second exception. Cha, Chi, Ta, Chi, Su, the third exception. Te and then To. Pick line once again and then we had Na and then Ha. Na. Ni. Nu. A. No, then a big line, then we had. Ha. He. Who. He. Oh, then a big line, then we had. Ra, Ri, Ru, Re, Ro, yeah? Ra. Ri. Ru. Ri and Ro. Two, the, the ones which were like, the three, the three Y ones. Ya. Wu. Oh. And then Wa. Bo and the Na. Hmm, that's it. That is what we have to practice once again. You guys with me? Everything is going good? Let me first check. Yes, I think so. Um. Yeah, everything is working fine. Let us practice it everything once again. And let us hope we remember everything from the starting till end that we have done. Otherwise, we have to practice it. Nonetheless, we have to practice it every day. If we know or if we don't know, we will be practicing every day. This thing we will be doing every day. I'll just keep this thing aside and we'll do, we'll do this every day, okay? Starting with this, oh, oh, it's simple as that. It's like, first strike is like this, second strike is like this, and third strike comes like this and like this. Right? Ah, E comes like this and comes like this, the two Eels. So let us do one thing, uh let us, uh I'll read the points. Let us first, uh, pronunciate that word. We shall pronounce it first, then we'll remember the mnemonic used for this. And then we'll write them down. Okay, so the mnemonic used for this was an apple, so it is an A inside that. Yeah. And mnemonic used for this was Eels, Eels inside the water, so the two Eels are there. Wu, the mnemonic for this was the Uno card, so there's a card. Like this. There's a stroke like this and then card like this. E, E, A, sorry, it's like E, this is A, A as an egg. So egg is given by a bird, so we'll mention a bird like this. I just, I think there's a stroke like this, but I'm not sure about the stroke. I'll mention this only for now. Then we had O, we had two Os inside the, uh inside the, what do you say? I mean, let me write this, that it can be a different mark. So Wu was like this. Uh. A was like this. O was like. Sorry, first strike was this, second strike was like this, second strike was a big, long like this. Right? So I think we should, we, uh we, congratulations, we can remember the first one. We are able to remember the first one, the first column as of now, as of now. Okay, let's move on to the second column. It's like Ka, Ki, Ko, Ke, Ko. Ka stands for, okay, first, we have to pronounce the word Ka. Then we remember the mnemonic, mnemonic for use, mnemonic for this was. For Ka, Ka was. Okay, I can't remember this. Let us read it. Ki, the key, uh uh key, locking key, uh and how we write like this. We remember like this, like this, words like this, and others like this. Ko was a bird's ko, simply like this. Like, like this, simply like this. Maybe you see if it is like this or this, that or the other. That or the other, okay, Ko. Ke was, uh I still remember the mnemonic was Ke, the container itself. So it's like, like this, like this. Like, like this, like this, and like this. Ke, Ko was a coin, so like this. And we forgot the Ka word. Let's try once again, Ka. Ka stands for what? I think we can't remember this, we shall move forward. I think we're done with the two ones. Then the third one is Sa, Shi, Su, Se, So. Shi is the exception here and how we pronounce that. So Sa was a salzaboule, so we remember that, it was like this, hands coming from over the sides and a salzaboule. Yes, Shi was a long-haired girl. So Shi. Su was, uh, I think Su was soon, the sprout will come up from the earth, soon. Like this. Say, while you are saying something, so it was like, it was like, like this. First strike was like this, second strike was like this, third strike was like this. Right? Su was, uh. Su, Su, Su was, uh. What was Su? What was Su? I can't remember Su. I think we should move forward, there is no enough time, we have given enough time to remember this. So, let's move on to Ta, Chi, Su, Te, To. What is Ta? Ta was, um. Ta, Ta was Ta only. The word was Ta, it was like this, it was like this, like this and like this. It was something, the first strike was like this, second strike was like this, third strike was, third and fourth strike was like this. Shi was a cheese. I know, I think this is wrong. First cheese was like this. It's like cheese, and it was like this. I believe, we have to check these two first, let me check that. Say was, uh, there is say, say was like this, yeah. It was she lies like this and say was like this. So this is wrong, so I believe. We remember the mnemonic, but we don't remember the, how it is written. It's like this and it was like this. And it looks like a mouth, you are saying something, so it's like that. Let's move forward, uh Su, Su, as we remember the mnemonic, tsunami for Su. So it's a simple tsunami for us, simple wave going on. Right? Te, so for Te, hmm. Te, okay, Te was for telescope. There was a hand coming out and there was a telescope for this. Te, our ten, can remember like as ten, so in, uh so ten is written like this. Some Roman numerous, I think. This was eight or ten, this was eight, I think. Not sure, so we can remember this using a hand, we can, uh, there's a hand, uh grabbing up a telescope. Like that. And To. Ta, Chi, Su, Te, To. To was, uh, To, a To, so there was a To and a nail, sorry, nail, nail biting that To. Something like that, right? So completed this, so till now, we have forgotten the Ka and the So part. Till our practices too, once again. Now let's move on to the this one, Na, Ni, Nu, Ne, Nu. Na, Na was, uh, I think Na was a knot. Remember, we remembered it using a knot, so I think it is like this. First strike is like this, second strike goes like this. This was Na. Ni was a knee, uh a human's, uh, human's knee. It was like this, like this and like this. Yeah. A human knee, Nu, Nu was, what was Nu? Na, Ni, Nu. I can't remember this one. Nu, Ne, Ne was, uh. Ne was, uh. I can't, I think Na, Ni, Nu. Nu was a noodle. For Nu, there was a noodle ball, so there was two chopsticks coming from here and there was chopsticks like the morning here. Two chopsticks and a noodle, so I think this is the one. I'm not sure about this, we'll check it later. Uh Ni, I don't remember, No was a stop sign. So just like a stop sign. I didn't write it well, so it was like a stop sign. Uh. Like this, okay? So we forgot Ni here in this one. So we have forgot, we have forgotten three till now. We're done with this, let's move on to the last one, the last four. Ha, He, Hu, He, Ho, Ha. So remember there was Ha, Ha? No. So we were with Ha, Ha? So, it was a smile, I think, it was, it was a smile, so Ha, Ha and it was smile. This was it, uh the, it was a little like, like this, yeah, it was like this. It was like this, so we had done with Ha, then He. He was the person He. Or. What was this? Ha, He. I can't remember the mnemonic for this. Ha, He. He is, I don't know. Let's move forward, Ha, He, Who. Who is Who? Question mark, opposite question mark and quotation marks. It was something like this, it was like. Uh it was like. Wait. It was something like this, but I will mark this, first we don't know really how it was, how it was written, we'll mark this. He. I don't know, Who was a Santa Claus, Who, Who? A Santa Claus does that, but I do know the mnemonic for this, but I don't know how to write this down. Who was, uh. Who was something like, uh, the Santa Claus is grabbing the. The, the clothes, I think. There was a straight here, and it was Santa Claus grabbing the hook. Something like this. I'm not sure, so we are not sure about these three insights. I'll not mark this because we have, we don't remember how to write this, if we don't remember how to stack it down. So, unless we don't remember Hi. It is He, He and Who. Okay, we forgot these three in this, that's too much. Okay, let's move on to this, uh Ra one. Ra, Ri, Ru, Re, Ro. Ra is, uh, what is Ra? Ra is, uh. Hmm, what was Ra? I can't remember this as well. Ra was Raggy or. Not sure, Ri was. I think I forgot this line entirely. We need to practice it again. Uh I think, do I remember anything from this part? Ra, Ri, Ru, Re, Ro. I think we will mark this, first we don't remember this one. We'll practice it again and these two are the ones which we did today only. So I think we, we are good to go, because Ya was, uh. Yu was a Yu, Yu, I remember, Ya was. We practiced it today, I have forgotten about this. Hmm, that's embarrassing. Ya, Wu, Ya, Yu, Yu. Ya, Mu, Ya, Yu, Yu. Yu was Yu, Yu, I remember. Ya was. Ya, Yaach. Was a Yaach. Yeah, it was a Yaach. And the way we write this down is, it was a Yaach. And it was like this. Ah, like this, and like this. It was like a P. Yes, it was like a P and a stroke over it. Wait, I did it. Okay, it was like this. Yu and Yu. Yu was something, ah. Okay, I didn't remember this one. I don't remember this one. Yu, Yu. Ya, Yu, Yu. Yu was. Yeah, mnemonic is, ah, related things and, ah, like you say the word, say the sounding word, and if you can remember an object, and through that object you can remember how to write that, that is a mnemonic. So where every alphabet, I'm writing a mnemonic besides them, like a rabbit, or a reed, or a root, or a tree. That's how we remember the words, like in the starting. So we are using mnemonics to remember in the starting, but when we have practiced enough, we don't need any mnemonic. Just how to, when we start practising these alphabets, we, we just push ourselves using a mnemonic, but then we practise it much, ah, practise it much, that we don't need a mnemonic to remember. So in the starting, we do need, I think. But yeah, I think mnemonic made our life easier to remember all of them, but we do forget about these ones. Na was Naunni, Bo and Wa. Bo was a Bo, a person, ah, jumping over that. Yeah? And Wa means Wa. Wa was, I'm not sure. Ya, Yu, Yu. I think I have a lot of them. I think we should continue practicing it once again. This is something which we need to practise it again and again to remember them. So we do see, we have, we are able, we were able to remember this whole column, this whole column. But in some cases, we were not able to remember Ka, the So, the Ne. This full column, we are not able to remember. And He, Ho, Hi. Hi is something. I think Hi is wrong. I think we are wrong. So Hi is, Ha, He, sorry, Hi, I'm saying Hi, but He was like this. So we were doing wrong. This was like this, and Hi was, so Ha, so Ha was, ah, H and A beside them. So it was written like this, like this, and like this. The H and A. So I think we need to practise, ah, this table again, ah, the Ra table again, and these two again. So I think these four, we need to practise it again and again to remember them. But I think others, we are fine, we're good to go. We were able to remember most of them, but with practice, we'll be able to remember all of them. So I think now it's the practice which is needed entirely. So we'll be doing this activity every, ah, we will be doing this activity every day, so that we'll be able to remember everything. And yeah, that is it for today, I think. We were able to cover Iragana's first table. And I'll search about that, whether if we want to cover this or not, but we'll be covering this one, this one table tomorrow. We are sure about that. We will cover this one, this one table, and this one I'm not sure about. And we covered this table, but we need to practise it again and again. That is one thing. Yeah? So, let's wrap up. I believe, I believe if you have any questions, you can ask. Ah. We're good to go. We know, we have made a good progress till now, but we need to fasten our seat belts and do a regular practice of those things we have done already. Because practising it again and again will make our lives easier and chapters, I think. Because the words itself, alphabets itself are too difficult to remember, to write. It's difficult. So yeah, that is it for today's stream. I think you all enjoyed the stream. So, that is it. See you guys tomorrow, and at the same timings, not the same time as 10:30, I'll be streaming from 10:00 to 11:00. And I'll try to stream at 10:00, because I don't want to be too late to stream because it's already 11:30. And I have an office tomorrow, I don't want to sleep right now. So yeah, I'll be, I'll be coming tomorrow as well. So see you guys tomorrow, and bye bye. And thank you for joining on the stream. I think you enjoyed. I enjoyed it a lot. We did a lot of progress till now. So, ah, this last is a book PDF, which one? This one you were saying? Iragana Katakana, this PDF. I think this PDF I mentioned in the description box also, Saatag. Ah, if you go in the description, you will see, you will see a worksheet named, ah, link. So that link will open this one. This is a PDF where you can practise everything. I mean, this is a good PDF to practise alphabets, to practise the Iragana Katakana charts. It's a good PDF to remember them. Can go through them. I mean, this is a good resource. That's why I'm using that. So, we will be leaving. See you guys tomorrow. Bye bye, Saatag. Have a good night and a nice week. Thank you guys for joining. Bye bye, see ya. Good night.